You.
It's.
You're.
Mr. Taylor.
Is not here. Excited about chatting with you in the kind of more. Instead of a presentation to you, giving you information for you to know about with us. Um. Okay. Do. Oh. One. Maybe not. Also, maybe not many. I think. Sure. To. Our students from. Yeah. Great. Um. Ah. Yeah. Um. Um. In the disk.
Yeah, we're.
Um. If we're. I'm not. I'm not doing more. When you want to ice cream and get started on this?
Yeah, we can talk you all through it and we'll try.
Hold on.
Hey, I was trying to think of like, could we have a look at it? So.
Yeah. Do I?
It's a very large one. To add what Jake was just saying, so the full existing condition report. They have. Yeah, this one is one for our less familiar with your TJ. Getting really to get them interested into the report, the process, and as Jacob said, is set. I just.
So you can hear it. Are you going to hear? So that. Yeah.
Hold on. I guess it's working. I was like, I think I hear myself. Yes. Just one other thought. So the this man that is instructing.
I think it's going to go turn it down.
The the introduction and all reports will be embedded on the project website. So folks will just go onto the website, click the link and and come right here. Um, so yeah, so let's go into it. We'll walk you through it. Uh, okay, so we did want to start with why do you need a comprehensive plan? Why is it so important? And what does it do? Uh, we opened with a little bit of narrative. And so, you know, folk, this is really tailored to a white audience, including those who have never really fully participated in a strategic planning process before. Um, so as Jacob slowly scrolls through, uh, and if the internet was probably faster, actually, this magenta actually has full bleed images that kind of instills in the reader a sense of change is afoot. And that this is a good time for the county to be doing a plan like this. I think it's not loading probably because of the internet.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, cuz this.
Oh, yeah, it's also.
Yeah, this is.
This is live on the internet, though. Yeah. So it's live process, like a internal polish.
The screen is distorted. Yeah, the screen is distorting. I'm going to. TV.
Well. It's on you now. People get the gist of it.
That's fine.
Um, so this first part, walking through what is a number of the plans, uh, we're opening up a draft. He talks about how lots of the aspirations that gamers have can be woven into a guiding framework that helps the county make good decisions. Get to the outcome. Do you tell the law introductory text to really situate a reader into what are they about to get themselves into? Um, so really importantly, one of the things we go into right away. The plan was not. This. Uh. Uh, it's not a vintage. Where we didn't hear that. Next. And that's. The. Feature. What is a duty conditions report? Uh, this is a little bit to the rear of the term. Uh, major section, we will likely cover both right there are likely how we will work. It's. There's websites like this one on the website right here and I. We. Um. It. Um. And you. Um. Uh. Um. Hey. Now, can you come? Hmm. Ah. But. Uh. Three, uh. This is. In. I was worried. In the region, uh, the middle part. A little bit. You are there. Early. That. It grew, you know. I. Well, I need to. Then some economic element of the factors, uh, talk about that kind of sense of moment of. Is sort of. This guy is instead. What we're trying to achieve.
And one of the things that I think is. Just about this sort of foundations table setting that we. But. You know. Um. Helping the reader and helping St. Louis counties elected officials and our policymakers to sort of really understand what's really going on right now. You can't do that without knowing where we end. So one of the things that I think is. So interesting about our region is from nineteen hundred to about nineteen seventy, this region was growing. Um, what did we find? That's pretty, that's pretty fast. That's pretty good. That means that we were just growing regions in the country. Seventy. And then all of a sudden, this region started growing at less than two percent per decade. Um, and we've been stuck there fifty years. Um, was county mirrors that? We had, we literally sixty percent growth per decade on average. For multiple decades until nineteen seventy, when we started growing on average one percent. Decade. Um, and actually, almost all of that growth occurred from nineteen seventy to nineteen eighty. So that's even, so it's even skewed a little bit.
Um. Just a little bit, you said twenty percent fifty.
Twenty percent for the region, which is our metropolitan area, city, county, St. Charles County, Jefferson County, Franklin County, Warren County, and also our neighbors and friends over on the east. Um.
One of the things that this section and this part of the story map, since we're on it, that we wanted to illustrate too, is that while St. Louis, uh, the region effectively flatlined, you could say, other both peer and aspirational regions across the US continue to take off. So this is a little bit of investigation into why that divergence occurred, or at least early things of why we're seeing that that may have occurred, right? So, um, that's what this middle section is really about. There's a, effectively, we've organized it into five states, I guess, what we call it, sort of almost like punchlines, so to speak. Uh, major takeaways of major different topics are about, let's say, economic development, workforce development. They. That all leads to why in that divergence. Uh, back to seventies. Um. We are all more detailed, meaning that I brushes. In, uh. And we bring up all of the. At the end, people are calling. Uh, it seems interesting. And the reason why we have that is it's it's kind of twofold, I guess, so to speak. One is that. A little. We have. And one more. Raising the profile. Uh. So. We're not yet. Over time, this is a great piece of the of this region. To the point now where we argue that there is an argument to say that the county is actually the center of a lot of energy of the whole region. And so the idea is that if we lean into that, that gives us a possible platform of thinking about the future here differently, rather than thinking of yourselves as possibly, let's say, subsidiary or secondary to the itself. So that's kind of all we conclude on that, that note, say, that's where possible, are the possible for the county, uh, could lie in a redefining of what that mission is.
Where did you find the driving?
I guess. Well, they're right into it. Yeah, yeah.
So called.
Yep. So let's go through, what's the easiest way? You want to just go through the middle section?
This one?
Yeah, let's go through this one. So this section opens, you just saw this with the population trends. These graphs are not, um, final. Uh, we have a lot of the data, but we're still finessing it mostly because we recognize that. Planners, we look at. Yeah, yeah, this graph says, we realize that most. So several, um, the the first set of graphs will be a. Benchmarking. Of. These. To be other regions and counties. A lot of countries to St. Louis counties. Other counties. How. Who. Certainly. I. Set of graphics are really telling the story. So then you can track how some peer cities, their growth, uh, continued and how some aspirational, or sorry, how, yeah, so how some aspiration, other regions, perhaps their growth was slow and then suddenly took off. So we want to put that into context of how St. Louis County has compared to this other places over time.
Okay, but. Still have to ask the question. Where's that?
Yeah. Forget that. Yeah.
Well, I'm. But you have a form of action is that we don't have, like, I don't like, I don't have, like, the two points of what has happened. No, I understand it, but when I say. Yeah. We had four. Two. Yes. Four. That's there. Was Worcester, Phil, they go in green guns. I don't have any of that now. Yeah, absolutely. And that is a. A. Uh, we have drawn, believe in, um. A. And the thing into a lot of really difficult structural changes in the US economy, in the local economy, St. Louis has been a, um, not as successful as many are here. Um, have been in that. Everything for the of the national economy. I mean, that's a big story if I happen to say. A lot. That's the. Okay, St. Louis County. Got the. It's. People that can afford a pot of beer or. What I've. But they. Well. They acknowledge. It. This is. Um. Well. Yeah. It's been thought of twenty five years. And the F D, yeah, parking for the people using the ball field. Committed in parking. Where I try to do that a little. Private. I mean, that that describes me to nowhere. It's a big old thing.
Like. Eric's art. On. Uh, and we would like to try here, yeah, historical data trends and other things that we can say. It's very, very common about very important. Are there other structural gaps? There's two reasons. I have heard and will help that we. It's the offer of a, uh, our reference to. Uh, if you want to say. Here. Decision made, decision you can make that either. A. Or. Then. It. Look. At. Out. He. Um. It. We. Them. And. They did a lot of these various policy decisions are and how you might, I mean, you put it out, I didn't can be very. How do you fix a a difficult question around, say, the changing of the American public? So I'd be like. Okay, you know, like, we do want to try and break it into smaller chunks, I'd say, where a reader and another, I would say, uh, citizen or layperson or a policy official can say, okay, I know. That this is part of your picture and we can tackle this, you know, this specific factor today. So with that, we're going to talk about something. It was online. So.
So. Um, so you want to be, I want to, go ahead, see, you're still good, like. Not.
Uh. Please, we can start out with. Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, it's. Till the end of your presentation, okay?
Sure.
That way we can go through that. Right now, whatever questions you have in the board. Ask. Oh.
Okay, so. Uh, the right here is. You can see, uh, on the. Right. So this is a, uh, kind of aerial of the region over time. You can see the boundaries of the county, St. Charles and others in the white outline. Uh, the tattoo on the left is really leading to a story of the growth spreading wide, but not necessarily dense. And we're introducing the idea of city growth being kind of physically sustainable over time. The idea that right, you generate enough growth, tax revenue, et cetera, that can help maintain a county infrastructure over time. So this, you know, the, the, I guess, the. The. Of spreading, you know, jelly too thinly over a piece of toast. That's really the the sentence we're trying to explain here is that the choices you make and how you grow over time is directly linked to fiscal sustainability of infrastructure. So, uh, now that's a very plenary way to describe it. Uh, working on, I would say. That may or may not be final. Obviously, if you all have opinions, we'll talk about later. Those are the sorts of things that we're working our way through right now. And how do you take a complex policy idea and start to disseminate to regular readers so they can start to grasp? These are the sorts of questions that, you know, this plan hopes to investigate.
And I'm sure you all have heard, you know, planning staff talk about this, but over time, from a very big frame, what has happened is that as our population is stagnated over the last few years, when people think, oh, we're building all this stuff, we must be adding. We're moving people around is what we're doing. And since nineteen seventy, what, and this, this cart goes back to like the eighties, but what you see is that as we spread out, we have to build an entire infrastructure system. That infrastructure system is only for the exact same number of people. So what it means is that we're not really extracting more money on breakfast and. Now. Which is why you're seeing. You're seeing. Let's just talk about who. St. Louis County. That's what you're seeing. These reasons. This reason. And is because when you. Because we spread out and we are now faced with an aging infrastructure system that was built, it didn't require much maintenance. We're now at that point where it needs so much maintenance and it never produced enough taxation to pay for itself. So how do we bend that trajectory over time to something that's more fiscally secure for us, um, as a as a region?
So we thought the this draft, uh, image that we're going to leak, uh, but really it's about explaining how there are trade offs in policy decision making around what you choose to fund and build as a place, as a community. The idea that you want really high services from the county, you also want low taxes and you want low density. Uh, thi- this is quite frankly, the the very blunt introduction that folks that you can't actually have it all. There are trade offs here, right? So again, we realize that a lot of people probably have necessarily brushed with this idea before if they're, um, well, if they're not operating the space, so it's not introducing that that idea. Uh, the next issue we we wanted to lean into, uh, understand a lot of people. Still worth saying regardless, which is, uh, because of the. Of implementing policy in the county, it needs very difficult to make efficient choices and that. Probably distribute service, yeah, as a county, right? So this idea that, uh, the structural way the county is set up doesn't inherently make it more difficult to deliver certain types of services as efficiently as it might otherwise. It doesn't mean it's the right or wrong answer. It's mostly a a state of fact that this makes it very difficult for us to achieve in a beautiful, determined environment. This is another difficult topic to to deal with.
And what I even layering something off on top of that too. What there is. That we deliver service because of this fragmentation of stuff. And. The most. Its capacity frequently have lower rates being higher about, so they don't have to extract as much out of their residents. Um, they're also. Typically. No professional staff that can produce and conduct those. On the. So also. That county in which, um, our residents set frequent need services the most are the ones who are least likely to get them and get them at a fair price. Um, and that is inherent in the way that we built our local government system.
One of the things we wanted to address quite specifically is the idea, we know. Brand range. And so, but we also know that sometimes it's a feeling, one of the types of difficulties you can use it at. One of the things that we're really looking at is, uh. We're using your labor statistics data effectively look at whether that you have the job that matched with a population of the county. And matched with a population of the county. And, uh, well, I see yours.
It is, yeah, it is from a distance.
Yeah, so, so the, the one you'll, you'll probably notice, you know, perhaps the most.
Where it's.
Okay, uh, the, the, uh, which, uh, are actually, those are, those are. And this is the one data point in a very complex conversation, right? So, but what we do want to allude to here is that clearly it's, it's badly. There are more jobs here than you have people, but that the big disconnect is actually in, uh, sort of you can tell. Low skilled jobs with low source. And that is defined by your labor statistics as effectively the level of college education and job training. That's required for a job. So, uh, technically, let's say, jobs that don't require a college degree. Very little to show on the job, you know, pay or, you know, pay for each other. And so, this means obviously these jobs are here, so. The option is where they come from and what is that?
So, and, and Stephen, we've chatted about this and so is, I think, one of the. Question that I was, is that, looking at these other two sections, these mid scale and high skilled jobs. We have more high skilled workers than we're going to have high school jobs. So we're not, what that means too is that an totally here, oh. Why is it that this region has so many and an excellent higher education system, but why do they leave? Well, it's because when they, when they come out of, when they come out. There aren't the high school job, there's not the high school job pool waiting for them, for them to stay here. In fact. High school jobs are actually already filled by existing residents. So when you are an, a graduate of Washington University, SLU, Amstel, um, any number of our great schools here. You go someplace that, because we don't have something waiting for you in St. Louis. So I think I hear that. They, they grew up here, they raised here, they went to college here, but then. They, they don't, they leave and they don't come back. And I think that part of that story is, is answered by our job mix. We don't have the jobs that they need here.
So the, we've also tried to how these, these issues around employment mismatch are things are compounded by. Uh, national and local trends here in housing affordability. And so we talk about. What you can see is that there is highly productive. What you'll see as we follow up. Areas where there is less housing production, it's going to do less equitable outcomes, higher rent, and I think, uh. Burden of ventures, uh, sorry, the cost burden that ventures in the county have, which, when we say cost burden. We mean, what is proportion of household income that you can spend on rent, mortgage and other life expenses? How much do you have? Just a bit. Or to single family. And the, the issue that we're really hearing here is the trend is actually sort of reversed. If you are a homeowner in the county, your rent, your, sorry, your cost burden is going to improve over time. And your homeowner, like, is doing quite well for you. If you're a renter, the opposite, they're not improved. So we overlay that line with your job potential mismatch. And how the renters in the copper market concentrated, you all know this, in parts of the county. You're, you're ending up in a situation where it is very difficult for some of that position to get out ahead. So you're in a resource constrained environment, you're working with a smaller box, quote unquote, because of the smaller growth. And you're putting, you're not, you're not putting, people are in a position where it's very difficult to get ahead. Because they are cost burdened and they're in a complex situation of which is hard to, to increase their savings. And access a better job, to move up, all those things they're compounding.
Mm-hmm. And I think, just one layer above what, what Stephen is saying is what we're, what we're doing is we're actually extracting more value. Out of the people who are least capable of having that, that economic value, that economic status. And what we're running from taking it where homeownership is farther, farther out of reach of these renters. And if we believe, and we do, I do, um, that homeownership is a, um, it's a figure of stable communities. It's one of the primary drivers of wealth for middle class families in this country. Um, we are, we are in a situation where renters are getting farther and farther away from homeownership. Um, which leads to poor economic outcomes for them and their families for the rest of their lives.
And a slot which they just delivered slightly early, uh, which is that not every household kind of is being forced to, which can be in the county. Get ahead and have success. I know. With that, people have that. Living people, and this, this condition, you know, this comment is a result largely of. It is an area of influence, there are factors we can look at to improve the situation. Uh, so we look here on this, what we've pulled so far, we, we'll, we'll send the next, we're talking a little bit, and to your point is that. There is a heavy racial, uh, equity story here and for us also in my, my, all this. So a lot of the, can we just present it? A lot of people, you know, some of my people. We want to make sure that a lot of this is skewed through that line. So. We're still working on. Um, going straight in the, uh, the total value. So where, where we're going, this introduction really says that you take all the things that we just talked about. And you start to minimize it and that is what this E C has, where you're right, this E C develops. Maybe air pollution, problem, contamination, and, and all sorts of things that. All the. Group buy funding and all those things, they, they end up. Really in a, a place I'd say where you clearly identify which places geographically are struggling the most. But this is quite, yeah, we think important in terms of getting out of this mess because. And you have the data back of why a group is vulnerable. And let's say it matches, you know, safety data, you are in a better position to have some better for funding. Be able to develop a program to solve these problems. Into a equity and environmental list, and the whole thing. What we're solving for, and also have your right to access more people funding it otherwise, which. I know, uh, we call it a lot of things that we're inherently generous. So obviously, it is, uh, looking at problems that you can't tell an environment where we can really start to. Um, so, uh, that's kind of what we're going to hear and. This is our condition in the story, talking about, uh, our. There are strengths here in the county. You want, and we want to make that, and this is a, we started. That the county, uh, over time is becoming more important and more essential to the success of St. Louis region. So it is the most important, uh, employment hub of the region. Uh, it is also, we realize there's a lot of lines on the right here, but yeah, um, we, we, we are working on. Yeah, we're trying to slow people's minds a little bit too hard here, uh, but. What is this? If you. What is happening on the screen here? What we're trying to, is that when you look at the number, we're looking at. A lot, if not most of the trips that start in the county, actually in the county and vice versa. So on the, what we're trying to articulate here is where people move in this region. There be. Or you know, that's, that's not actually happening. So. You can, and all of the better, uh. Over, over time, we want to see this trend increase. So that means that in some ways the energy and employment transportation of activity is shifting slowly over time. You can see that over time.
That hours.
Yeah.
Forty, fifty five.
What traffic?
Forty four. What?
What traffic? What areas are you?
Well, I, I, again, a lot of people I know who work downtown. And I know that there's, it's not as bad as large cities, I know, but I do know that there's a lot of traffic when you're hitting out of downtown because. Um, fifty five is, is making a lot of times their construction, but fifty five, forty four and forty four. Busy, sir.
Bees, it's literally before we get down here. I was talking with Stephen, like, Stephen, we've got to redo this map because this map, this map, it took off. Actually, a lot of smaller trips on here that have accumulated too, because I've actually talked about this much. Didn't that, didn't we explain the, 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 this traffic? Along the highway and why, um, the number of trips with the number of jobs, um. It's, yes, but the heart of the region in terms of just employment number, I think was. And we have the numbers to show that. It is not showing. And that is what we're trying to, what we will show, but I'm, you know, focused on this and also what I knew that this, this is not the right graphic to show it.
We literally just made a map, right, before we came down here, that particular, exactly what you're talking about. There are congested, we're not saying for, you know, congested corridors. What we're trying to allude to here is that over time, you can, you, instead of thinking about, oh, there's a lot of. Over time, there's going to be possibly more congestion in the county and energy and everything else happening here rather than necessarily. A relationship with the county and then it makes sense what is changing in what's were over time.
Was that before, or later, or after, open when people are no longer working in the office? You know, I mean, they have data through twenty twenty two.
That's the latest data we can get for. Yeah, you know, for. Patient data. At this point, what we can, is that the trend over the last many years is a, in worst. This is not a image of all of this in the region. It's an image of trips that can end in the county to understand where they're going. So basically, if a trip starts in St. Louis County or it ends in St. Louis County. It's on the map, in the data. So it's something, let's say, that goes from St. Louis to St. Louis City. It's not, this is because the way we visualize this, because it, we can show you that the other one is pure chaos. If you look at, it's, it's unintelligible.
I screamed.
And I actually jumped because these.
It's funny, it's, it's just showing. An end anyway.
Yes.
Or. And in. Now, it has so, this map is actually based on information at a sensitive level, which there are going to be hundreds of in St. Louis County. Um, the. Playing out with really small trips, like when you had trips of fewer than just a few people. Also, they raised it up to a, a higher level to, to be able to pull out the highest three hundred. And we're, we have traffic, but we're not.
Track.
Where are you, where are you getting the data from? County to somewhere and course, I see all the trips I made, three day, all day long.
That's exactly where the data is coming from. Did you really need to go? Last time. Okay. Um, we have actively lots of different companies, including your phone, uh, higher gate, this data, not minimizing they do when they, they run through. But the data themselves is not associated with an individual person. So allows a firm like R to analyze transportation patterns without having any data or specific person. However, the theory, of course, through synthetic data creation, that the trend itself map is from a track to track level or sometimes more specific.
So they're not, my data, people's phones that have been integrated into and then basically stripped of any sort of like.
And that has been.
And basic data points about.
Highway forty four, the Franklin County line to see how many people from Franklin County are coming in to St. Louis County and St. Louis City. And they're leaving, they're calling back on Highway forty four. This, this.
People already visit this within new traffic where your mind will not require a slide to interpret it. Uh, and then we have to spin the, 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 on this one.
Thank you. Oh, it's, it's why, it's why this is helpful. No, no. You know, why? Hard to understand. Meredith pieces, if we understanding, then it's not the right way to show the data. But I will tell you that I feel very confident that it's enough data, maps to say that. The basics of this are actually correct is that you start looking at it. And it's not, it's not. The nineteen fifty five anymore, we're all going to say, it was any mark back and, and this. I mean, I think our friends in the city would be.
This is, I will say the bill, and not that we want to over dive into this, but there's a reason why this is going to be taking thinner stage. Second, is because the thought was, well, if this is the trend, maybe we lean into it. And this becomes a narrative how we think about future policy, they come to restart and figure out growth. Deal with our various resource constraint environment. So it's a, it's a data, it's all the, it's a reason. And it's some level of confidence where I think this might be worth going into. Uh, that's why it's specifically in, and I would say.
I think from a, from a narrative perspective, it's the moving in some ways the thought process that we are St. Louis City's bedroom community into. We are the core of this region and we are, what happens in St. Louis County is probably the main thrust of what drives this region at this point. For good or for less good.
The jobs in St. Louis County and St. Louis City. In the morning before we started. Well, they're basically spokes in the earth, they take twenty dollars in our up here. So what we said is, well, they make the money here, you know.
And that's actual, I mean, that also is part of, it's not, some of this is, again, we're setting the introduction because we get into the actual story maps. Uh, you really dive into a lot of stuff, but what you're, but I think. Be a lot more job. It more force, we do have a lot of opportunity to capture. We've already got the job, we have the opportunity to get people closer to their jobs if we can grow our housing stock and grow. We've already got the job, we have the opportunity to get people closer to their jobs if we can grow our housing stock and grow. There's a whole lot of. And people. Then try to find a.
It's a little bit rough news and also and you're gonna go out and build it. Pick up like like south and uh how are they gonna help that already get started? They can promise them everything all this, but they want cash on the very way. They want you to open up the wallet and start popping it out. And they love it. They're gonna make it.
We're. Uh yeah, so you know, in the story, we're we're planning out the economic factors in countries, though, you know. A lot of industry clutter involved that will be about industry clusters here in the full story map. But here again, we're just introducing you here to talk to friends about what is happening.
I think what's um important for this commission too is that you know, some of the stuff is. There's also industrial land use policy is that for a long time, St. Louis County, at least at that government level. We have not had a consistent sort of well thought out industrial land use policy. And it's it's over time that we take our our comparable or our advantages here in a lot of these these area. Um and really can really build on that. And new policy is going to be, I think, the key ways that the county can. Play for middle to middle class jobs.
Uh I think. Close out with a. Here and this is a. It's twenty fifty. Who knows what it's going to be for both of us? It's important to start from a place of optimism and forward looking action rather than spending, you know, too much time on. You know, oh, this problem, this problem, this problem, you have to start solving some of this stuff. So the idea is that when you get to in the story map, you will be given kind of a. Let a uh website dive into all of these different topics. Here, if they've got several hours, they can go into contain itself. And point like data, as you know, some of the cool. So this is an introduction to those major websites with all the detail afterwards.
Question. It's our player, it's whatever puts that piece of becomes more expensive. And we'll back out to Jefferson County because it's gotten so good because it's. Out of the town you live, old high school area.
Oh, I can tell you people can't even afford to live in the house that they're done. So another factor in that you make it so good that it goes back down gates to go before.
So it it actually has so many. And you all obviously recognize that you all exist in a broader region and your decisions in theory have to align with regional partners. So as part of the process, we do want to talk with city, east, west, and others about what is the possible role of what is the vision of region? What is the county's goal in the convention, whatever the county does? So to long get to come back to your question is. In a sort of constraint environment. Being on this place to be attractive, it doesn't always mean explains the whole set, right? Because you both don't have the ability to store a lot more growth here. It doesn't always because you just have to develop. It means reading all. The in the future. So I would say the point, there is no magic bullet, right? In in theory, I'm I'm from Texas and everyone is going to Oklahoma. I have to balance that because it's cheap right here. The point is to be. Is a.
You know, this this layer on top of that too is it's. The county domain, working with municipal partners to look at the ways that um either the the policies we have here. How they feed in the federal, not in the regulation. And we're not seeing it for a lot of so much of affordability um when you look at. This. I will, I will. Well, that. Oh, well, doing making money.
That's just the way it works, you know?
For a hundred homes for forty.
He says something about. It's the state land coverage.
Yes, this is the exact same.
The appearance of.
Do they have to be both and we're we're looking at. Or then not. Or a small. And for counting for it, it really is. Reduce my property value.
Mark. It's a lot of questions though.
Yes. No. And.
Not in a way, so we have the Catholic Michael tap in North County where there is more poverty. So I'm from there. Uh and so people don't live in North County or work up there or drive through North County, you wouldn't, you wouldn't know. Now, there are big homes up there, but people there were really, really struggling. There's so much a lot of disinvestment in our county. Needs be sold out in housing is that. Housing is one of the issues. Uh so the diversity of housing and. Quality of life, so these are things I could asterisk next to. And then um it's not like maybe there will be a discussion about the middle neighborhoods and allowing accessory dwelling units as a. As an option to help. Be a part of some of the solutions. Don't remind comments, not so much questions, but comments.
Thanks.
Question, when you were talking about working with other regional partners, right? City. How much? Because like I said. That you have another that's why, right? So. And then saying, oh, away because. Want to go up, so. I need. We're just going to go again. Oh, I you. In that we are in frequent communication with our partners at St. Louis City. Um they are going through some similar planning process. Right now, they're getting, they're updating their strategic land use plan. Um I know they're also doing or preparing to go for a um a specialized um sustainability plan at St. Louis City. Um you know, and. You know, informally, I mean, Paul was chatting with uh the mayor and colors from their planning department on a. This is very, very issue. Um so we are. That we're meeting. We are not, yes, um. A. He is. Call it the. What you're talking about is. Very competition that we have and that territorial and that fragmentation rate. We matter like it's very nature to have a collapse and how much I'm in alignment with the city of St. Louis. I'm still work on work. And I do this. So.
The two plans are at least a lot like if they're working against each other.
Want to fail, it's going to hurt the other one.
Absolutely.
Oh, absolutely.
You want to work together enough. So that everybody succeeds.
And we want to build, I want to build, I mean, I lived, I was a resident of St. Louis City, I lived in town Broadway and Olive for seven years. I want to build the city of St. Louis up and I want to do so professionally and personally. Um and I know that and I feel confident that our friends and colleagues at the city feel the same about St. Louis County. Because we are as regionally, we're in this boat together um one way or another. So.
You know, um there's so many St. Louis County municipalities that border St. Louis City.
Yeah.
That literally you drive down the street.
Right.
The city and the county that have this, well, yeah. I mean, say, well, say, well, some, you know, borders and borders and all kinds of things up. But the streets just continue from like Jenny's to St. Louis City. And you believe in me. Sometimes somebody is the city and the town.
Right.
Yeah, we were using the boat hundred second, though, I'll throw in one more. This, I think we will push a little bit of the surprising types of salt boats here. As it is, you know, to reverse these trends, these are systemic questions. It shouldn't be impossible to involve hands on another.
Yeah, I think it's going to be. Have you unbrainwashed some of the voters because it all comes down to a vote? And there's so much disinformation, outright lies and just stuff that's so bogus, it's not funny. How how do you get rational people in a room that look, here's why this is better and think, oh, that makes sense? They leave, they go out. All of a sudden, neighbors saying, oh, I want to do that, what's gonna happen? No, our tax dollars are gonna go over there and, you know, you just road wanted paved in front of your houses, gotta get paid. They're gonna send the money out here.
This doesn't have to go for a vote of anything, this is changing our policy.
And you're going to merge the city and the county.
That's nice.
Sure, I think it would be all come have a Jesus man.
That's not what we're doing here.
That was tried and I and I've got notes in here that I think you have to keep this separate from that.
Mm hmm.
Because that was tried and failed with a turpuline. If you start. I will tell you that is not going to be a, that is not going to be something that.
I don't think you'll get enough collaboration doing them separately. I don't think you'll get the voters of the county. Wanting to pump money into the city are the voters. Are the voters of the city wanting to pull money into the county?
But I think. That's one of the things that we haven't mentioned yet. Um, but it's. Besides the actual deliverable, what's the thing for the overall plan? Is collaboration, a lot of what we're doing today throughout this week, we were here. Around once a year, and it's been continuing to be here over the next two years is to get the right people in the right rooms of these conversations. Hey, we identified, we know that St. Louis is also working on this thing. I wanna talk to them as much as possible, make sure. Time to relax, but it's, it's really more about what are you trying to work toward that we're also trying to work towards? We can keep talking about it over the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. And not just the city of St. Louis, which we always keep coming back to, but the other eighty-seven in the region, East West Gateway, the other counties in the region. Like it's, it's definitely the, the Jalen's team that's still, still hammering home, which is this, while we, this is for St. Louis County. Never not going to be, it's really about a larger area. The county is taking a part of that and the resources that it has to build up everything. But you never really got alone. And that's kind of why the county fell behind, why the region fell behind is because you got disconnected. You started to work individually and now we're trying to bring it back to that broader question of perspective and opportunity. And these conversations that we're having today and throughout the weeks are hopefully what we get a lot out of this plan, not just drafting it and saying, this is the St. Louis, this is sort of the St. Louis County to address these areas, uh, for transportation or land use, whatever. But informal conversations and formal conversations that we can start now, we can hope will build over the next two years. And that's a big part of what next year's process is, is making sure we get this out in front of the right people, asking the right questions, making sure we're saying, hey, what are you working for? Over the years. Open that. With that. Oh. And trying to break those barriers down through, through the conversations that we can have. So it's making sure that's. Strategic and intentional sort of as we go throughout this entire process, if that makes sense.
I think we can work together as a larger. Uh. Those things separate them from the large. It happens more work together. The city can.
Like, yeah, the people that need to consider is what's happening over here that we need to make sure we're paying attention to. Because reality is, Dick was talking about that data zoning code. The county is a smaller portion of that, of that piece. So we need to make sure we're having those conversations within municipalities. Hey, we're trying to bring in this ADU, uh, uh, policy here to drive home development. We have to discuss as well, I mean, the first thing to care about as we go throughout this process is where are there, where is there a line that needs to happen? And sort of these blurred boundary lines between. We're driving down the road and you don't know. Let's see that hard lineup. Well, the county's doing really well here, but this municipality isn't, we're vice versa. And like that's, that's the operation we're trying to get to with this long range plan together.
You know, where you do see, uh, the. Just. David. And they don't. The same. You should.
This is the time.
Yes. Okay.
I forget.
There's ups. Um.
Well, that's more like us. Oh. Oh. We all. For school, you know, I mean, there's that. So what I was way out of the.
No, what I'll say is. District as a. Uh, are. Not. And it may. Things I'm always, I'm always sort of hammer home, the inequity of our region is in our school districts. When you look at your tax bill, more than fifty percent of your tax bill is your school district. St. Louis County, the government only represents about between four and higher percent, depending on where you live exactly. St. Louis County, we are five percent of your bill. And the other forty-five percent or other taxing your, fully fifty percent of your tax bill goes to your school district. Well, actually, anything. It. Our many sports. County. He heard. More than, tax rate is more than double or voice max rate. The reason why that is, is because the value of the land. In that, in that school district is so much lower than the value of the school. Higher rate to extract even the bare minimum money from their school district. Who will be extracting that wealth from? The people who are absolutely least capable of paying it. So Parkway School residents get to enjoy much lower tax rate because of the values of their land. Versus a resident of Riverview Gardens. And I would also say, I think I'm at right in front of me, but I'm also gonna get this though. Our render versus homeowner cost burden issue, which is that, um, you know, these people that live in these school districts, uh, are being for rich. More value attractive and they're the least able to pay it.
To, to bill on that, you, you don't, in that, like we have influence exactly with the school district. But we do have influence over property values and how property is about, right? So that is a way to help make that problem through county.
Right, so it's not direct. So it's not direct, like, it's, it's. All. And then because that leaves pressure off of our school districts. Um, but with it will not, uh, anything about our, our school districts or, or anything. Sure.
See.
It all. Um, he. I thought is pretty what he thought today up here. Okay. So there is, there's a lot of connection. That's why I really appreciate you all being. The real root that's in that. It gets. I think.
Think, think. We really appreciate you all running down those little things you really wanna get out of here today. And, and your knows, if you write it down and think about it more tonight is, did our sort of, are we supporting success? Are we hitting on? You know, what is it? Representatives, maybe not necessarily historic growth opportunities, but what are you experiencing or have you experienced as sort of an issue that's caused the county, the region to fall behind? And also more importantly, what are the assets we need to make sure we're touching on as we move forward? I mean, we touched on some of the pieces, some of the players that are still here that we're trying to grow, that the larger region is trying to chase. Definitely a good one, you know, we have some great institutions here that we can build off of as well. But in, you know, your personal experiences, what are some other ones that we haven't talked through yet that you think, hey, it's actually really creative? Right now, if I'm representing, it's worth highlighting or at least discussing some of those pieces too. As you're thinking about it, it'd be huge for this, but that's gonna help sell that narrative to the rest of the people across the county that we want to have.
Right, and making sure that. Or. Does it capture your attention? Is it a gate? For like. Kind of near the kind of story. And also in this story. Um, I, I believe in, um, and I also will fundamentally tell you that despite the challenges of this region, I'm. For that area. Um, so I. To be, I guess we can. Was talking. Oh, that's.
Yeah, I have a question.
I want us to be.
Yes, I'm, I'm with you, but.
I want us to be.
Everybody wants to be the, is it, they want to be.
Oh, very. So, you know, is this also the kind of story that you are? I can, I, I'm into this story and I'm into this, I'm into this work. Um, and yeah, I think that refine your story this way, that makes it more. The engagement that when people read this and as we talk through a. Process with you. They're national. A test. Um, that we, we heartily recommend this adoption of this process or this plan to, to, uh, to get capital.
I think it's great for stuff, I feel like for the thing. That's such a good. I'm really curious to see what. Obviously it's true and, you know. That I thought and that. Um, there's a picture of Santa Sue on there. That's.
I think it was north. It should be north, the northern counties.
I was like, not the county. I'm gonna go, you guys don't know what you're talking about. If you're showing the suit.
As I can. Should have been well, well, care part. I think. Do.
And I guess. The other little thing is the, um, the airport, well, while it is in the county, it is.
It's owned by the city.
It's not a county. It's active access. It's. It's our. It's so regained. All operated by anyone. Located in the county.
It's located in the county. Hold on, let me reiterate this.
It's not.
I don't think.
The county. Town or just that.
It is, yeah.
We don't own it.
We don't.
Technically, they don't know, cause it's internet, it's like non.
Well, the city.
Yeah, well, the city, no, the city owns. They own it.
I was making a joke about.
Yeah, it's, uh, yes, it's.
Those are the two things I have presentation at home is, cause people up at first glance.
Um. There. But it will want to be, it not want will be a photo of is of our jurisdiction.
Are we going to put, uh, sections in here? There's that part of the.
So.
Lower.
RG, yeah, but yes, so that will be, to me, those are not as resonant in the existing conditions report, but they are things that are much that are of the weekend. I wish.
Hey, so what you're trying to do, like how in depth, does this lead us to know?
I, I just.
People that want to contain. How is that disappeared?
Right. Like what are the, what are the strengths that we have? When we get to sort of policy recommendations and ways to expand on that, is I think where we'll have a discussion on. And that. Know that's us.
When do you want us to have the email back to you guys of our notes?
Um, as soon as possible, I know that's, that's vague. Um, what I will tell you is that.
Six simple days.
Yes. So we are, um, you know, I. Page on this on Thursday and I want to. I'll drag. Love before I throw it.
Sure. On Thursday?
We. You go.
Ninety-nine percent.
Like a ninety-five. Eight percent. I. Yes. You know. We have. Oh. Again, to start the. And then we have asked, well, basically the point at which we have upstairs and we are, we are confident, like this is, this is the fun. This is.
To ask that. And us.
Hmm. Public consulting. Um, Wednesday is. We're. He. Let's be, be. I'm. A lot of. Still live dog. They don't. You get. The next thing that, you know. Forty types of issues you want to investigate are, right? Because these plans can, like, you, there's a hundred different things you can look at. Uh, we don't focus on the ones that really matters. If you definitely say this. It's being the. You feel a good grip on, these are our. This is, you know, how. With those. That we know call.
Here, I mean, in this part of the, that you just can, uh, do. We love, we love, we love, we believe in your, my daughter, yes, she's a millennial, graduated college, stay in Kansas City. Um, and so, so she. So it would be interesting if. What if they leave? Fifty. All of a sudden, I can do that. You guys.
Mm-hmm. The kind of. House that you can live in place and. Yes. Uh.
What kids in all here?
No, I. Right.
You can do stuff that everything. A woman said exactly what her daughter said where she went to school and she felt like there's nothing for her comeback.
Yep.
I'm about to actually decide to be in this kind of. This should. And. The, um, when. People. He. And she said. She just helped me to. It's the political racism and state laws of what I saw. I'm. Well. And I'm saying, your is like. They go in our. Trans. Market.
Okay.
Uh.
Uh, is it. Three of the. Reality that. We. Met with, not only we did our own. Uh, of St. Louis County, but we met with Ness and the. Absolutely. In. That's. Excuse me. That. Then we're keeping. We, that's birthed in the three. That we are experiencing, that the operation. Yeah. Who are telling, who are destroying. I've gone out, seen regions where racism, it, it, where I, I. Community has not been created through the lens of racism. I've gone to Atlanta, I've gone to Houston, I've gone to X community that does not have the same, the same legacy in the same way, the same. The same, the same legacy in the same way the same Lewis has. And why do I want to come back to a community that feels like it's been so disinvested for so long? When I live in a community that feels like I've always been a part of it and it's vibrant? Those are the anecdotes that he's hearing and telling, and I think that's a. That. For. It. Um, I. Uh, he. He. One. In our. Many. Dark. By the. That. Crazy. I literally didn't ever have enough in it to particularly in the like, what is a compliance section perhaps is that. Equity and sustainability are the key components of everything that we're looking at in this. Not just racial equity, income, planning, activity, everything across the board. So we're looking through that lens. Urban development, uh, opportunities, access, infrastructure. Everything across the board and I think you and Greg both. This is like, well. We're not saying that yet. You know. This. But this is wild, it's a long range plan. And very unique. Make why. It's something you're focusing on specifically. And each one of these. I appreciate you both.
Just gonna be hard to find himself behind.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we could chat about this all evening, but we have been chatting for an hour and a half. Thank you. Do you have a little bit of business to conduct? Hopefully it will be done relatively quickly, I think that it's rolling in our business. Um, we want to move into the chambers, the chamber to complete our business. It's a part of the meetings.
What would you like us to do?
Yeah.
Go through your next doors. Can you go through those next doors? Yeah.
Does anybody need more water? While we're kind of getting. It should be. It should be moved. That's the name.
All I want is this much water. Once and now. I don't want more water, isn't like.
Hey, as long as you guys get your vote in on mine, I don't care what y'all do.
Deny.
Oh.
Oh, I know.
Oh, yeah, I think Roberto maybe. That might just be today.
It's, yeah, it's gonna be a little. Are you guys gonna stand watch?
Are you right there?
Why am I?
There you are.
It's a little weird just to get you guys all.
Cause I bet I could just come in the class.
What? Lose nine. Lose nine here.
I don't need to sit by now.
I know, it's been weird, I'm like, wait, when do I put these like three or four?
Wait, no, Gretchen.
What?
Gretchen, talk to her about it.
I did not put them out today, but it has been weird.
I'm like a bad kid, I have to sit in front of the class.
There's not really, uh.
I think, I think you're down there.
Roberto?
Huh?
Right here, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me, I didn't see you coming out, but again.
Two. Three, four. Where's? No, I was just counting. Do we have, um?
I believe Lou is still online, um.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
Okay, we can hear Lou.
Who's that, is that Lou or?
Yeah.
Chris.
Hmm, that might have been Chris, I don't know.
Hey, Chris, Lou.
Hang on, I'm getting there.
No, this is Lou. Hi, Lou.
I was like, it sounds like Lou.
How are you?
Great.
I was making sure that the audio, that. You could hear things.
Right?
Let him do that back there. Yeah. Yep.
Yes, so you will gavel in and then, um, and then Mel will take roll call.
All right. Well, we gotta wait. Listen, everybody, we got everybody?
I think we have, I think we have all of our in-person.
Okay.
Very German.
I'd like to bring this meeting to order, could we take a roll, please?
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Ms. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
All right, Mr. Presiding Officer, you have a quorum, you have six.
Yes, we do, okay. Let's go through our meeting summaries. Uh, meeting minutes from executive meeting, April first, planning commission, executive, April first. Uh, and the meeting minutes from public hearing on April twenty-second. Can I get a, a motion on that? For approval?
Motion to approve?
Second on the motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. St. Louis County Commission Status Sheet. Status sheet for January sixth. Through May fifth. Status sheet from, uh.
We can move to accept.
I'm move to accept that.
Motion.
Second on that?
Second.
All those are. To approve?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those oppose? Eyes have it. Committee reports. We have none. New business. PC twelve dash twenty-four, Michael and Stacy Klinger.
Good evening, Commissioners, PC twelve dash twenty-four, Michael and Stacy Klinger. Is a request for an amended C eight ordinance, um, to permit a veterinary clinic, pet daycare facility, and all C two shopping district permitted uses. On a track size of zero point four one acres located on the east side of Telegraph Road, approximately a hundred and twenty feet north of England Town Road. As the commission may recall from the last public hearing, this site is located in South County and to your right on the aerial, the site is outlined in red. This is a larger aerial of that site, again, surrounded by primarily single-family homes with commercial frontage along Telegraph Road. So the request before the planning commission this evening is for an amended C eight in the planned commercial district to permit a veterinary clinic. Pet daycare facility and all C two shopping permitted uses. The current C eight on this site, it already permit a veterinary clinic, so they are just wanting to continue with that particular use in addition to the permitted C two. At public hearing, the commission saw the preliminary site development plan where they showed reutilizing the existing building, maintaining the existing monument sign. They had fourteen parking spaces, originally there were fifteen, but in order to comply with the building codes. Uh, standards for ADA accessible parking, they did reduce, um, one of the parking spaces down to make that fit into the building code. They also did propose an eight-foot-tall fence in the, along the southern part of the property, along the back of the property. At public hearing, the petitioner did state that they were no longer pursuing a pet daycare facility, so the fence would not be even put up. So staff is recommending approval, the range of C two shopping district permitted uses would be appropriate along Telegraph Road. Um, including the existing use of a veterinary clinic, however. The department would, um, state that the following C two, permitted C two uses. Uh, would not be appropriate at this site due to the proximity of single-family homes, including pet daycare facilities, packaged liquor stores. And marijuana dispensary facilities, so those three things would not be permitted on this site in the C eight. The C eight commercial, uh, planned commercial district procedure continues to be the appropriate mechanism for regulating the use at this location. And the proposed site improvements will improve the aesthetics of the site through landscaping. So looking at the preliminary plan, um, some of the recommendation staff is making for the preliminary site development plan. Would be that all landscaping follows section one zero zero three point one six two landscaping regulations of the St. Louis County zoning ordinance. Um, to have a buffer, a landscape buffer yard along Telegraph Road. Um, for one tree and four shrubs per twenty linear feet. Also to have two buffer yards, one, um, to the eastern and southern property lines to buffer them from those residential neighbors. Consisting of two trees and four shrubs in per twenty linear feet. We also note that any new fencing that is proposed in the future would need to be decorative. And any new signage, if proposed, would need to be monument in style and follow the C two shopping district regulations. So at this time, I ask for a motion.
Well, staff suggesting, uh, recommending an approval, do we have a motion for that?
Motion to approve? Second on the motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it.
Oh, hang on, question. Sure. Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So, uh, back to slide where you had the three uses that would be.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, exceptions. Could a petitioner in the future come before the planning commission for conditional use permits? So you said permitted uses, these would not be.
So what limits the petitioner, a property owner's ability to, um, expand those uses is basically how it was advertised. So because this was advertised for all C two shopping district permitted uses, um, and we have recommended to preclude a couple of them. They could come back to the planning commission and ask for an amendment to the resulting governing ordinance if the council concurs with the commission's action. Um, so the primary reason for not including, um, pet daycare facilities was that, uh, we found it would be appropriate for the commission to consider. Uh, other conditions such as the fence they were proposing. Um, so if they wanted to do that in the future, they would do what we've called a correspondence item, requesting an amendment to the ordinance if they wanted to propose one of those uses. That way the commission could consider it and consider what other amendments would be appropriate. Okay.
I have one question. Um. The proposed use, uh, was shown as a veterinary clinic, which they currently have and are doing, so that really isn't a new need. Um, pet daycare facility, which they have scratched and were not allowing. And C two shopping district is the only new use, basically, so they're.
Permitted uses.
They're requesting that, um, is it going to be the same owner or?
It sounds like from what I heard in Jacob and Mel, if you feel differently from what you all heard at public hearing. It sounds like this individual is wanting to sell and or maybe lease the property out, but it's sounding like they're looking to sell more than anything.
Right, the way that the ordinance reads right now, only permitting a veterinary, veterinary clinic, they're having difficulty getting a new tenant. So I think he's either trying to get a new tenant or.
It's been setting empty for a long.
Right.
Correct. And one thing too is that, um, this would permit the full range of C two shopping district uses. And C two shopping district philosophically is intended for the establishment of businesses that cater to the home. So cater to small businesses in the home, it's the lower intensity of our general shopping district uses. Um, so it would, it would permit the full range of C two shopping district uses at this point. Which would basically includes retail, service, office type of uses. Um, is really what it would be, is what the uses would be expanded to.
Okay. I noticed, uh, the daycare facility is a scratched off packaged liquor and marijuana, uh, dispensaries. One, one question though, um, I know we've had tattoo parlors in the recent, is that allowed, allowable in C two?
I don't believe.
Let me double check, but I believe that's a conditional.
It's a conditional, it's a conditional use.
Yeah, um, so they would not be able to go to. That would not be permissible without going back to public hearing.
That's it.
Got a vote, so that's been approved.
All right.
On the P, PC thirteen dash twenty-four, Ameren.
All right, good evening Commissioners, this is PC thirteen dash twenty-four, Ameren. A request for conditional use permit in the NU non-urban district to allow for a telecommunications tower greater than forty feet in height. And an electrical substation. This is a twenty point four seven acre tract on the northwest side of US Highway sixty-six, approximately five hundred seventy feet west of Kennedy Manor Court. As Commissioners may recall, this site is in Southwest County and on the aerial is bounded in red. On the larger aerial, we can see the relatively sparse landscape with single-family residences, a mulching facility, a silicon quarry and others. Uh, Commissioners will note that the prison is on the northeast corner. This is a request for a conditional use permit in the NU non-urban district. In this district, a telecommunications tower greater than forty feet in height is a conditional use. As Commissioners know, all conditional use permits are evaluated using the four criteria seen on the slide. Uh, of note, during public hearing, the petitioner indicated that this tower supports ongoing efforts to create a private LTE network. And selected this site with the existing substation because of its rural nature. Um, on the preliminary site development plan, the tower is circled in purple. Of note, the proposed height of the tower is greater than two hundred feet and will require a variance. And additionally, telecommunications towers typically require a setback greater than the height of the tower in the event of a collapse. Uh, so this proposed location would also require a setback variance. Uh, despite these requi- requirements for variances, the department is recommending approval. Um, this is consistent with good planning practice to build near an existing substation. It does not impact the operation of the site or surrounding sites. Um, and as the petitioner noted during public hearing, it is in a relatively remote area, more than seven hundred fifty feet away from the nearest single-family home. And finally, it is important to strengthen the emergency responsiveness of our utility companies. So at this time, I would like to request a motion.
I can motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it.
Good evening Commissioners, PC fourteen dash twenty-four, Pickup Outfitters. Is a request for a change in zoning from C eight to R two residence district and an amended development in C eight. For parking, outdoor storage and advertising signs on a tract of three point zero three acres located east of Lindbergh Boulevard. Approximately five hundred feet north of Aldi Road. As Commissioners may recall, the site is in Northwest County and to the right of the screen is the subject site outlined in red. This is the larger area showing the layout or surrounding development. Directly north is an auto storage, east are single-family homes, directly south is an auto parts store and vehicle service center. And to the west are residential developments in Maryland Heights. The petitioners have a two-part request. The first is a change in zoning from C eight to R two for a portion of the tract. And the second is an amended development in a C eight to develop outdoor storage, parking and advertising signs. The business includes updating, installing and selling aftermath vehicle accessories. At the public hearing, the petitioners presented their site plan, which shows access from the adjacent property on the south via a cross-assess easement and advertising sign easements. It showed fifty-one space pa- paved parking lots surrounded by six-foot-tall chain link fence. Existing rock service drive and two B boards to remain. Existing vegetation retained along the eastern property line, it had five-foot-wide landscape buffer along North Lindbergh Boulevard. And, um, there was no lighting or signage proposed on the site plan. Staff is recommending approval because residential zoning at the second tier of North Lindbergh Boulevard is established. And continues to be appropriate and consistent with good planning practice. Com- commercial development also along the North Lindbergh Boulevard is established at the site and remains appropriate. The proposed use of the tract is appropriate at the site and compatible with surrounding permitted development. However, there are some revisions that I would like to see on the site plan. The first is that the installations of new planting to replace any dead, unhealthy, invasive plantings along the eastern property line. Because the just showed from the site plan to maintain existing landscape. And the cyclical movement vehicles on the side development plan, especially at the southern part, because it's not paved from the site plan shown. And decorative fencing along North Lindbergh Boulevard. And, um, we'd like to note that barbed wire fence. And we'd like to note that barbed wire fence not be permitted on the site. And at this time I ask for motion.
I get a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. And now we have, I think we have old business. And we've got a runner for approval, old business here. PC 10 dash 24 and 11 dash 24 The Grove at Grants Trail.
Good evening, commissioners. This is PC 10 dash 24 and 11 dash 24 The Grove at Grants Trail LLC. The request is for a change in zoning from M1 Industrial District and Floodplain Industrial District to R4 Residence District, FPR4 Residence District and a Planned Environment Unit. In the R4 Residence District and the Floodplain R4 Residence District. The proposed uses for single-family homes, tract sizes on a 3.2 acre site on the northwest side of Interstate 55. In the southwestern terminus of Spokane Drive. This letter is consistent with the actions from y'all's previous meeting on the 22nd. You can see the site outlined in red on the right and the site is in South County based on the context map. And at this point, I would like to request a motion.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Was there a second?
No.
I have some questions.
Could I, could I go ahead and do a second and we have questions?
I'll second.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
So are there any conditions to this approval?
So this is a letter of recommendation, which means that at the April 22nd.
Yeah.
Executive meeting was when we made the full presentation of our recommendation and went through a lot of the conditions there. But there are conditions, some of the less standard conditions are, for instance, due to the proximity to the interstate, we are requiring a rear yard landscape buffer to help mitigate some of that noise. And requiring that the developer disclose the possibility of interstate noise to the lots that share a property line there.
But Mel, why don't you do explain a little bit subsequent to our, the meeting last time. We did meet with McBride, with representatives from McBride. So explain a little bit about, about the nature of that conversation.
So we did have a condition. Basically, the process is when we, after the commission takes action on the information report, we then send it to the petitioner. So they can see the literal action that was taken, but then they can also look through the conditions of development. Mostly to look for mistakes, but also sometimes we, there are things that just get adjusted. So for instance, we had written a condition about a stream buffer from Grabaway Creek, which ultimately wasn't going to be necessary. Because the banks of Grabaway Creek are actually far outside of this. The limits of this tract. Peter, what were some of the other? There were a couple.
So we did.
Soundproof windows.
So we discussed the soundproof windows. The petitioner said that the cost would be prohibitively expensive. And that found and the staff concurred that the disclosure about the noise would.
I've got a question.
Oh, sure. Sorry. Excuse me.
Is it possible that, that the builder could offer that? Not put them in, but offer that.
We did. Go ahead, Peter.
So it was proposed to the petitioner. And what was representative of staff was that that is not within their kind of design standards at this point. So they wouldn't have those kinds of windows at this point to propose to respective buyers.
That may be above standard.
What they would be able to put.
That seemed to be the perspective of the builder.
That was the, so right. So this is, the home builder is McBride Homes. And as I, McBride has their design criteria and individuals can, can personalize their homes to a certain extent. The builder stated that they do not have, soundproof is too extreme a word. But you know, sound mitigating windows is not a standard or even a product that they keep in their, sort of in their stock. So we accepted, we accepted that. They came in and chatted with us. However, what I would state is that if the commission continues to find, even with the, with the builder saying this is not something they typically have. If you'd like us to put it in as a condition, we will, we will amend your recommendation to include that it be on offer. And that's, that is for the commission to determine whether it finds that the, the petitioner's rationale for not offering it is valid. Or if the commission finds that it can, that you know, that the petitioner can conduct such thing, you know. But I leave, but we leave that. We as a staff accepted the home builder's rationale stating that it is not a typical product that they have. And that the procurement of such a product is not something that they frequently do after conversations with them.
So in your proposed offer, solution to that was just disclose that there's going to be some noise.
As disclosure.
And the rear, and so there's not typically a rear yard landscape requirement for single-family homes. But we have written a recommendation and we presented to the commission in the info report that they would do a 15-foot wide landscape buffer yard, which would be located in an easement. Which means it wouldn't be, you know, it couldn't be removed to help that, that some of that noise.
And they would have to landscape that.
Correct.
Correct.
It wouldn't just be above.
Correct. Because it is, right.
Right. The language is densely landscaped as approved on the site development plan.
Any more questions?
So, so did you say that you spoke to them about offering as an option to the homeowners? That the homeowners pay for the soundproof windows? Did you ask for that offer?
So that's how, and that's typically how they do it. You know, they have their suite of, you know, their menu of different things. But what they told us was that basically that product's not on the menu. So they don't have it to offer their, you know, customers at this time.
Right.
The homeowners would have to do it after the fact. They would have to replace.
They would have to replace it. Right. Which is one of the, and that's one of the difficulties when you, you know, when talking to a petitioner. It's kind of, right. It's, it's weighing whether, you know, from a policy standpoint, I think it's, it makes sense to ask your resident whether they want to put in the soundproofing windows or not. And at their cost, right? So it would, they can choose as part of their suite of updates to the home. But the home, this home builder is saying that they don't even have those items available. To now whether, but that, that is the response that we got from the homeowner or from the home builders.
I mean, that's to be expected. I mean, they're a builder. They just want to crank them out. Crank these houses out and build them. And, and of course, they don't have soundproof windows. That's not something that's common. So I don't know. That concerns me that just so easily accepting that. I mean, it can be a offer. They just have to research. I mean, they just haven't done the research on it. So, okay.
So, so just proceed. So procedurally, the, these are the opt, this is the options before the commission. Is to accept and to forward your letter of recommendation. And as, as Peter had said, that is consistent with, with what was voted on at two weeks ago. The other, the other option that the commission could do is to send it along with an amendment to the letter of recommendation. Which you can, you can, we, we brought to you what the, what the home builder said. But if you would like for us to add in a condition that says homes in the, on the lots that front I-55 shall be offered. And is at that point, the home builder is required to do so for those homes. And then they will configure, they can then determine the best way to make that business practice for them and to conduct their business. But those are really the two main options in front of the commission. Submit it as it, as it is, or you can amend your letter of recommendation to, to include that.
And I'm pushing this so much because I'm that homeowner that lives.
No, and I, no, I.
I have experienced this for 24 years.
I appreciate it. Yeah.
And so it is, it is not something that I'm taking lightly. Because of the quality of life of, of a MODOT highway that has experienced more and more traffic.
Expansion.
Year by year by year by year.
Sure.
That at, at first, it just used to be intermittent traffic at night in, in 1999 when I moved there. And now it's consistently a lot of noise. So.
Could we resend the two motions? And Hervadi, would you like to make a, a motion?
To, you can amend the recommendation. And what we would do is we would, if you, if you were comfortable with, with, with telling staff verbally to do so. And then we could provide it in writing so that it can just, and we would just submit it on. If you would like it held to see it in writing yourself, it can be held and you would review it in writing before it's sent to council. You know, I feel confident that we can write the condition and send it to council to keep it, to keep it moving so that it doesn't get delayed. But that is at the commission's discretion as well.
Sure. So I make a motion that we amend the language to state that the builder McBride offers the homeowner the option of paying for soundproof windows and doors in their homes. That it's an offer.
And soundproofing may not be the right word, but.
We can, we can determine the word. Sound mitigating, sound mitigating windows shall be an, an, a home modification.
Sound mitigating windows and doors. I mean, it's the windows and the doors.
Okay. Yeah.
Windows and doors.
Windows and doors.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And then I, I trust that St. Louis County staff will see it through and that it doesn't have to come back to us to see the actual statement.
I'll second that motion.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. Okay. Correspondence. Okay, get a, are we going to go over the correspondence now?
Uh, we, I think we do want, yes.
Before you is PC 4897 McDonald Douglas. The request is an amendment to ordinance 20,486. The site is currently zoned C8 Plan Commercial District. The proposal is to expand the range of permitted uses to include a seminary and graduate school. The track side is 26.31 acres on the north side of Shackleford Road, west of New Hall's Ferry Road. You can see the site is in North County. And you can see the site outlined in red on the right. And here is the larger aerial. Initially, this, this site was experienced a request for a change in zoning from NU non-urban district to C8 Plan Commercial District. And amended development in the C8 Plan Commercial District to allow the development of a corporate training facility. This request impacted 26.31 acres of a 296 acre tract. That's why those two outlines areas were kind of separate from one another and within the larger tract. It facilitated the development of a technical training facility with accessory uses and was permitted via ordinance 18,578. Since that initial request, there's been two amendments, one in 2000. When an amendment allowed for the development of a 70-foot tall flagpole type telecommunications tower. And then again, in 2001, an amendment allowed the expansion of the building area from 180,000 to 280,000 square feet. The proposed amendment in front of the commission tonight would amend the permitted uses to a seminary and graduate school. The department is recommending approval. Finds that the request demonstrate a appropriate reutilization of the site. Which formerly used, I mean, was used for a training and professional retreat center. And then the department would like to note that no changes to the site are proposed. At this point, I would request a motion.
Do we have a motion on that?
Motion to approve. Second on the motion.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Ayes have it.
Next, we have PC 1913 House Rabbit Society of Missouri. The request is an amendment to the conditional use permit 915. The site is currently zoned R1 Residence District. The proposal is to permit an accessory structure on site. The track side is a 3.68 acre tract on the south side of Elizabeth Drive. Approximately 750 feet west of Majestic Drive. As you can see, the site is located in southwest county. And you can see on the right, the site outlined in red. Here is a larger aerial of the site, once again outlined in red. For background, this request for conditional use permit in 2013 was to operate a club for the shelter and adoption of house rabbits. The department will note that conditional use permit 915 only permits one building on site. The site has been the subject of one amendment previously in 2016 when an amendment allowed the increase of a footprint of the building with a 1,600 square foot addition. The proposed amendment would allow an accessory structure to function as a storage building. You can see on right, generally, in a rudimentary way, what the storage building would look like. The department is recommending approval. Is requiring that the accessory structure not exceed 1,500 square feet. But finds that the amendment does not disrupt the character of surrounding development and does not expand the scale or scope of the approved use. And at this point, I would like to request a motion.
Have a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the approval.
Second on the motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it.
So this last item is a resolution of intent regarding PC 2906 Serenity Hills LLC and PC 2917 Serenity Hills LLC. Some of the commissioners may recall this site on the west side of Hillsborough Road, south of Paradise Lane in the southwestern portion of the county. It has been the subject of multiple requests for changes in zoning and accompanying, accompanying Planned Environment Unit procedures. I think maybe it's been the subject of three, at least two. What happens when the commission and the council adopt a PEU ordinance? They all are, have a built-in time limit for when the site development plan has to be approved. Otherwise, what the zoning ordinance says is that the commission has to consider reverting the zoning and repealing the PEU. So as I mentioned, this first was subject to a change in zoning in 2006. That development did not move forward, we assume because of the housing market at the time. So in 2017, when a different developer came back, the commission had to have a public hearing to consider reverting the zoning and repealing the PEU. In order to then entertain the new request from the new developer. Essentially, that's what's happened again. The commission granted a, and the council adopted a PEU ordinance that governs this site in 2017. But that development never came to fruition. So in order for what we have now is a, a different home builder who wants to pursue a development on this site. The commission has to consider reverting the zoning back to the NU. So essentially, by adopting this resolution of intent, we will schedule a, a public hearing for you to consider reverting the zoning. The same public hearing where the petitioner, the new petitioner also comes to describe their request. But we have to, we have to take both actions. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions after a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions?
So this is basically a reset, right?
Yes. So what I'll tell you is that the commission can, when you, when we have that public hearing and then we present a report to you. Your options will be to revert the zoning or if the zoning is still compatible based on the new request that comes, you could not revert the zoning. But this is the process you have to take to consider it.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. Go to the order.
I don't have, I don't have anything. Um, we do have the May public hearing a week from tonight. I think we just have two petitions.
Oh, but we have a, we have a.
One of them's pretty exciting.
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
No, not, not...
No, just regular 7:00 PM public hearing.
But one of the petitions, it's a good, it's an interesting one, it's going to be University Crossing, so it's a...
Yes, up at the North Hanley MetroLink Center, there's a huge parking garage and a huge surface parking lot, and there is a housing developer who has gotten state funds
Yeah, Missouri Housing.
To develop workforce housing there. So they are bringing, actually, they're requesting a mixed-use development district because they're also proposing some ground floor office in the building, so. But yeah, I don't have anything else. I really do appreciate the discussion we had earlier. And as we indicated, please do send, you can send your notes to me, or you can send them to Paul.
And just a second, that thank you all so much. It's really critical to have other people's eyes on this kind of stuff, to make sure that the story is meaningful, so thank you.
Okay. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Any opposed? Eyes have it. See you. There you go. All right, good night, everyone.
Good night, Mr. Cunningham.